Would you please rise as we call on Pastor Dave Foss to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Jesus, thank you for this day you've given to us, and as we come to you this evening, we're thankful that you hear our prayers. We give you thanks for this city, for the chance to live here, to work here, for good neighbors. Thank you for the officials here in this room and the work they have to do. Give them wisdom as they deliberate on the things that concern our community. Help them think rightly and fairly on the issues before them, and through them may the good of our community be accomplished. So, thank you for your chance to be part of this community, and we ask for your enduring presence and encouragement to us as citizens here. Help us by our behavior and by our words to encourage what's good for this community. So, help us and lead us, not just corporately but individually. Again, thank you for these leaders. Bless them in their official duties, but also in their homes, in their private lives. May they know your blessing there too. So, we pray all these things with Thanksgiving in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
It's 5:30, Monday, August 20, 2018, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Rachel.
Here.
We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, if there are any additions or corrections to the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Members of the council, good evening. Under the consent agenda tonight, we have a seventh item, and that will be a resolution approving a variance at 3230 Pebble Shores Drive related to a garage. That went out to all of you this morning and was a late addition to the agenda.
And it was unanimously supported by the planning...
Supported zoning.
Zoning commission?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. With that, do I have a motion to accept the approval? Agenda is approved?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Anthony. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 All the same sign, that motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening, and there are no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, we have a resolution in your packet acknowledging the retirement and years of service of Debbie Deesler, and I will read that. Whereas Debbie Deesler has submitted her intent to retire effective August 31, 2018, and whereas Debbie began her employment with the city of Fergus Falls on September 10, 1986 as police clerical two position, and whereas that title has changed to records technician where she has remained until the present time, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept Debbie Deesler's resignation and thank her for her 32 years of service, her dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular council meeting of the city council held on August 20, 2018 by council member Fish, and was moved and adopted and was seconded by council member Rooper, and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Rooper.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
That resolution is approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent...
Congratulations, you fucker, you're gonna make it all.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service.
Congratulations, that's it.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and again, there was the six items in your packet, along with the seventh item that was added by Andrew. And if there's any of these issues that anyone would like to be pulled off of the consent agenda and discussed individually, we can do that? Anthony?
I'd like to withdraw item number five.
Number five, okay. Anything else? If not, is there a...
I'll move the adoption of that.
...resolution to approve the consent agenda minus item number five? Thank you, Rod.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Rooper.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Now, item number five is a resolution, decertifying tax increment financing district number I-1-12. I'll call on Andrew Bremseth, or Anthony, what was your question?
My question was just to, obviously, just for people's information, it says, you know, district number I-1-12, and it was defining exactly what is that district, if it's possible.
Amy, would you like to answer that question?
Mayor, council member Hicks, those are, the district is in relation to 306 Western Avenue and 320 Western Avenue, the two apartment buildings that are along western, so River Bluff, I believe, is their name? Yep.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would make a resolution to...
Decertify? Thank you.
Decertify.
Anthony?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Rachel's. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rooper.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Tonight, under ordinance resolutions, the first item, we have a second reading of ordinance number 72, 7th series, relating to Amy Court vacation. This has been to committee, it's been introduced. If there's any questions, we can direct them to our city attorney. If not, roll call, please.
Rooper.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
That resolution is approved. Item number two is a first reading of ordinance 73, 7th series, amending 2.75E relating to the port authority, and I guess, if I'm not mistaken, this is just aligning our language and our code with the state statute relating to the makeup of the port authorities, is that correct? So, we're aligned with the state language.
Right.
Any questions from anyone? If not, I guess we just need that introduced this evening.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. And finally, number three, we have, we'll need a resolution to approve the final draft of the Northeast River Reach Small Area Plan. Ryan Miller's gonna talk this about that, we have a copy in our desk, I believe, so calling Ryan Miller. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. At the August 6 city council meeting, I presented an update on the planning work regarding the anticipated closure of the Hoot Lake Coal Power Plant, and in that update, I mentioned the progress for the Northeast River Reach Small Area Plan, which is a long-range land use study of that project area within our planning work. Since that meeting, a final draft of the Northeast River Reach Small Area Plan was developed by Bolton &amp; Menck and presented to the Planning Commission on August 13, where a motion was made to present that to the city council at this meeting. So, tonight, we do have Hyla Mays, senior planner from Bolton &amp; Menck, who will present the final draft of the Small Area Plan.
Thank you, Ryan. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, again, I'm Hyla Mays, very glad to meet you all. I'm here tonight to talk about the Small Area Plan, the process and the recommendations. You have a copy of the PowerPoint which sort of summarizes the main outcomes, there is a little bit longer document with more materials, I think, provided as part of your packets. I'm gonna talk for a few minutes just to give you an overview, but I'm certainly here to hear, hear any questions or clarifications I can provide, and to set the stage for what this can do in the community. First of all, the purpose of this, I think you heard some from Ryan last time, of the sort of, the impetus for this was, of course, the closure of the power plant and the repositioning of all the land which they own in that area, potentially. Of course, they still control the land, the power plant is still there, and some of the final decisions to be made about the fate of it and exactly how that will happen are still a couple of years off. So, this is an early stage of the process. We're not, at this point, saying this is definitely gonna happen, and certainly, the recommendations in here, a lot of them are long-term. Some of their things that can happen sooner, but development forecast for this area probably is gonna take years to realize. But again, this is a vision and some direction to help the city make some decisions, and the power plant themselves make some decisions about what comes forward in the next coming years in this area, and how it contributes to the city. Up on here now is a few of the goals that we were given and which emerged from the process in terms of what is this about, why are we doing this at this point in time? Again, it's about providing guidance for long-range public and private investment, because recognizing a lot of the decisions here will be by private property owners regarding development for their sites. It's not the city coming in and buying it all, making it all happen. It's going to happen based on the timing of development and the timing of the property owners in this area. Providing land uses that support, but don't compete with downtown, you're spending a lot of time and energy in your downtown, which is fantastic. This is a complementary piece. It's not replacing it, it's not identical to it, but it complements the larger picture. The idea for extending recreational trails, which comes out of your downtown planning, is certainly an idea we knew we would be carrying through here, we'll talk more about what that looks like later. Providing river access to recreation, and developing a development vision that's viable, makes sense for the area, makes sense for your market, and can contribute to the tax base, recognizing that as the power plant's being decommissioned, there's interest in saying what else could be tax generating capacity in this area. That, as a message, was important for this process, because one of the first things people say is, "Well, why can't you just leave it natural and beautiful and as it is forever?" And you say, "Well, it's, it is a lovely area, and the recreational and natural amenities are certainly something emphasized, but this is also about saying what could happen here that could be some economic activity that can support your city as a whole." There's a bit more there, but I'm gonna just go ahead and talk a little bit more about the process. We've been meeting and with the steering committee group, staff, and some representatives from key organizations, especially the power plant, since last year, and we also have had a couple of open houses. All the property owners in the study area were notified by mail and through other means a couple of times, and we had about 80 people come, all combined, to our two open houses to really talk through what they saw in this area, what they experienced already that we could be addressing to make better for this area, and other factors. There's a website, a project website, which is still up with all the draft materials, media releases, social media updates, and, of course, a lot of conversations with the power plant themselves, to really hear what they're saying, where they are in this process, and to make sure that they're comfortable with what we're proposing here. So, just a little bit of discussion about, this is the, this picture here, is the vision that's come out of this process in terms of what are the development opportunities, and then go over this quickly, and then talk a little bit more about each of the opportunities in more detail. The idea, again, beyond this, is to think about what is a viable use for this land. Much of the land, which is not really shown here, but much of the land is owned by the power plant, the site of the power plant itself, plus land they've acquired over the past effectively century, largely as a buffer for the facility. So, they, so they own a lot of the real estate, and much of what you're seeing here is on their land. Again, they have not made any decisions or agreements that this is what's going to transition, but the area that we show in purple at the center is the land which they have identified as certainly not moving forward with development in a near-term scenario. Their training grounds, the SEAL-landfill, and access to hydropower are central pieces, they are staying put. The idea is that they would still have access to them. That said, everything else in this area is shown as potential development, and the analysis and work we did as part of the study was to find out what would be a good feasible match for the location and for the city as a whole. So, that goes into our discussion of opportunity sites. These are each, I'm gonna walk through each of these, and each of these is a different spot on the map. The Main Street residential area is land along Main Street, just east of Gutenberg Heights, and extending all the way to the city boundary. This box doesn't show it, but there's a yellow piece off to the broken-down dam road, off to the eastern boundary there, and that, those areas are currently vacant land, mostly, but not entirely owned by the power plant, some agricultural right now. The idea for here would be a single-family neighborhood, or maybe twin homes, very low-density, multifamily, that could be a reasonably priced, affordable, single-family neighborhood that could extend housing options in the city. It would have to be compatible with the neighborhood existing over there in Broken Down Dam and Gutenberg Heights, so the densities and the styles are being proposed as a similar area. We know that there are some issues with regards to utilities serving that, so that's called out in the plan as well. Not necessarily problems, but needs that need to be addressed to serve this area properly. We understand...
Ms. Mays, could I, Your Honor, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Pertaining to the size, so I can kind of keep up to the, what we're dealing with? I noticed it was 1.8 square miles, the total study area, on your, early on. Do you have the acreage of the area we're looking at that is actually part of either the power plant? As you said, they own a large part of this area, 'cause I looked for acreage in here and I couldn't find it.
The total acres for the land owned by the power plant right now?
Yes, Otter Tail Power and the power plant proper where it sits. I'm trying to get a perspective of what we're dealing with in terms of plant size versus the development we're looking at.
The power plant site itself is about 10 acres. I don't think I have a number with me in terms of the total acres owned by them, I could, I could get that later for you, but I did not bring that with me today.
I've heard it said that it's, there's something like 375 acres...
That sounds reasonable.
...that comprise the Otter Tail holdings, and, but no one had a figure, I mean, I haven't heard a pure figure for the power plant itself, you know, like, including the ash, the storage areas, the unloading things, but I've been out there, and I'm guessing it's over 75 acres, the power plant proper, but...
Depending on how you define it, that seems reasonable. I mean, the, like I, the, this area doesn't show it too well, but the, the area that's orange is a power plant plant site right now, and the purple area to the east is the, I guess you could say, the core area that they control. We didn't really define that, we can easily get those numbers for you guys.
I tend to think in acres, not square miles, and so I was trying to get a handle on that total area, and, you know, 1.8 square miles, I think, is around 1,000 acres. But, so if they own a few hundred acres, then we're talking about maybe a quarter to a third of the property is owned by, by Otter Tail Power, either prop, plant proper otherwise, and something like that. But I was just wondering if you could get specifics, but that, you can get it later, that's fine.
I can get that. I'm sorry, I don't have that for you tonight. We, we really were focused on the, what acres were developable, so that was kind of, we were backing into that, but we can get that for you as well.
Thank you. So, just off the top of your head, then, do you know the developable acres?
We have it, we have it broken down by development type, and I can, I can pull that up. These are good questions.
If we added those up, you know, you'd have a rough idea of what's, what's, what's not. Right.
This presentation doesn't have right in front of me.
I think it's very helpful, it's just having the, knowing the size of these, it'd help us understand what we're, you know, working with.
Sure. It, it all exists, but I, in the summary report, I omitted that because I was not aware you'd want to see that, but I'm happy to provide it. The, the acres for this development are probably roughly, the yellow in this one, Main Street Residential, sorry, probably about roughly 100 acres of land in that. What's tricky about the acreage in this area is there's a lot of steep slopes, so a lot, there's a lot of land that's not developable technically. There's also some wetlands in this area, and again, we have all the calculations, don't have them in front of me. Just a little bit more discussion about this in terms of the vision for this area. Again, it is, it is sort of taking into account that there is some inventory in the city for single-family lots, but not a tremendous inventory. This is an opportunity to expand that as an option. The layout you see here is just a suggestion. We certainly would think that what a developer would come in would be able to provide more details. I'm just gonna quickly go through the rest of these, and again, this is written in sort of a qualitative rather than a quantitative nature, but we can certainly provide that. I know that, and Ryan talked about this perhaps last time, one of the next steps that comes out of this is sort of a quantitative analysis that looks at the, some of the economic impacts, this sort of the back-end work associated with acreages and, and yields is something we can provide in support of that, and also as a standalone product. The Wright Lake area is the power plant area directly south of the lake, is across the, directly south of the Wright Lake single-family neighborhood that fronts on there. We did hear a lot from the folks in that area about concerns, that this is their view, this is a natural area right now, that they're not experiencing as a developed area. However, because our vision is to look at development opportunities for here, this shows a potential for a single-family neighborhood. We are assuming that this area, which is between the lake and the riverfront corridor, would be probably a little bit higher-end residential because of the natural amenities, and a little more, need a little more infrastructure to serve it. That area currently does not have any public roadways, it would be needed a, an extension of Division Drive down into this area to serve that, as well as, of course, an extension of utilities to serve the housing sites here. The Fur Avenue multifamily site, this one's probably about 14 acres. That is around the city's reservoir site, which is a, if you're driving by, it's a little building there, right off of Fur, between the pond and the existing Wright Lake residential neighborhood. The idea here was that this could be an opportunity for multifamily. It's not a small site, but it's a tighter site, and because of the proximity to a higher traffic corridor, and because it desired to provide more housing options, this could be small-scale apartments, townhomes, some kind of multifamily development. I believe the city also had a plan that envisioned this about, maybe a few years ago, for this to be a commercial site, which is possible. It's probably not the strongest commercial site as a standalone, because it's not adjacent to any other commercial, it would be by itself, but that's not off the table, it's in the narrative, we discussed that, that we thought multifamily may be a better fit for this particular location. Fur Avenue Commercial, and this is maybe about 5 acres, this particular site, this is right up against the city's boundary, on the northeast corner of the city, right near Division Drive. The site there has a power line running through it, as do a lot of these sites, because the power plant, but there's room to fit some development. The idea here is that this could support and build upon the commercial district that is immediately to the east of the city boundary, in the township area, and provide an opportunity for retail, commercial, some kind of service-oriented business. This would not be of a scale or type that would compete with any other major commercial center, this is not a major mall or a major destination. It would probably be a neighborhood commercial that provides convenient services for this area, especially if this area's gonna continue to grow as proposed here, this could be an amenity for the area. One thing to note here is, Division, of course, extends only a portion of the way down the city boundary, it does not connect all the way through. As discussed later in the transportation section of the plan, we thought if there, you do start developing both ends of this corridor, it may make sense to connect that road through. That would, of course, mean an additional bridge crossing, which would be, could be a significant project, but we showed it as a potential linkage in this area. Okay, the power plant site itself, and again, the, calling it the power plant site, it, there is going to be a remaining piece that's associated with it, that's the hydroelectric, but the bulk of the facility is effectively gonna be decommissioned. And so, we had a lot of discussion about what would be a reasonable assemblage for this area. Again, about 10 acres, it's coarse, the terrain, like the rest of Fergus Falls is not completely flat, so it's in different terraced pieces, not contiguous as a flat area, but still fairly substantial. We had some thoughts that this could be a couple of different things. It could be, one scenario could be that the building is razed, the infrastructure's removed, and you just have a riverfront naturalized area that could be used for recreational uses, canoeing, kayaking, camping, something like that. Now, that's, that's an appealing use, and it could certainly be an anchor for a riverfront park area. It does not probably generate a ton of tax value, but it's a, it could be a very achievable goal. A more ambitious vision would be to reuse the building itself, or to reuse a portion of the building, that would require additional environmental investigation to determine what would be, need to be taken to convert it to be something else than what it is right now, and to be sure that's a safe use. We thought an interesting old building in this area that is quasi-historic, though not officially designatively historic, could be reused for a lodge or a destination restaurant, I don't know, some, some interesting destination commercial or event venue, like a place you would rent. We wouldn't, again, the concern would be, we don't, wouldn't want to compete with, for instance, your vision for downtown, or for the old sewer treatment plant, or for some other site in the city, but it could be something that's unique and different, and a little bit special about this area in terms of a destination. The lot to be figured out in terms of the feasibility with that, with the building, but it seemed worth, a question worth asking before just agreeing to the full demolition. In general, it's not otherwise a site for commercial or industrial because of its, if you've been down there, you know, it's in, kind of, in a little hollow, it's not a direct location, it'd be immediately accessible otherwise, except for destinations. So, complementing this is a vision for parks and trails in this corridor. The map you see now shows a band of green. This was largely carved out based on, not so much any, any formula for parks, but just looking at where the slope lines are, where some abandoned rail lines are, which could form a good trail bed, and some land which will remain open space in perpetuity related to the power plant. There would have to be a lot of discussion in terms of if there are areas that remained off limits in terms of public use because of the continued use of some areas for ash storage, or for access to training facilities, so not every square inch would necessarily be directed for public park use, but there's definitely enough there to make a meaningful linear corridor through here, and to connect through a trail network. The trail on the northern side of the river would follow the old railroad line, which currently is a spur, but used to extend well beyond the city limits and, and connect to other cities, and I believe the corridor, I'm not sure it's all still in the same ownership, but it still does connect through, if you look there. There's also an opportunity, of course, to connect to the North Country Trail, and the Glacier Trail, and the downtown trail network, to make sort of a meaningful loop and meaningful recreational destination for this area through that, as well as a natural amenity. Again, even though maybe not necessarily all of that would be developed as parkland, some of it might just be part, passive park space, it could also serve as a green area for the residents as well. Transportation, the road network in this area is very limited, as you know, if you look at the, in fact, if you look at the city's plans for transportation, largely, there's, it's just a blank space in the plans because since most of it was under common ownership for a number of years, and there's no need to access into the site, there is not much in the way of roadway infrastructure. There is water sewer, largely due to the public works facilities in this area. The roadway network which you show is basically just local access roads for the most part that would serve the new development. The exception, besides the parks and trails piece which you saw earlier, would be that Division Drive connection on the eastern boundary and potential future river crossing there. That connectivity piece is something that was appeared in previous versions of city plans in the past, I don't think it has a current iteration of, in terms of funding or scheduling, but, but again, since this is a long-term plan, it seemed worth bringing that idea forward. There isn't really need to make many more connections through the center of the site, there is an existing bridge at the power point site, which is used largely for their purposes, but since that, there's not really a meaningful transportation purpose for driving there, it seemed mainly that it might be a good recreational connection to connect both sides, the green space on both sides of the riverfront. Public utilities, as mentioned earlier, there is some in this area, largely due to the existing development. This is not the clearest here, but there, we have mapping that shows the extent of utilities into the site, and some analysis in the plan document itself that talks about the feasibility and what elements would be needed to serve all the development. The Gutenberg Heights area is, is an exception in that it's not currently served fully by utilities. If, if it was extended to the Main Street Residential redevelopment concept to the east, it could be an opportunity to serve those residents as well, if that made sense at the time. The assumption is that this would not be built proactively, but we've done it as part of your usually development process, subdivision and so forth, not as any sort of prospective work done on behalf of the city. So, long-term implementation, these are just a few PowerPoint, uh, power bullet points that mention sort of key issues that might be, that will need direction in the future. Land use, it's continuing coordination on the power plant transition. Environmental investigation, there is some storage of ash on the site and other materials that will need to be continually evaluated, again, to make sure these sites are safe and developable and accessible, and the power point will be a key player in that, of course. Supporting new development, including through rezoning, the plan, as I didn't, I didn't get into all the details, but we do have some recommended zoning districts to support the different development types for this area. For parks, open space and trails, there are some regional trail corridors through here already, what an opportunity could be to amend the trail network plan to include this link as well, that would be beneficial if... That would be beneficial if, if seeking funding to complete those, especially the riverfront trail network. Working on dedication of land for open space and recreational use, again, much of that is power point, power plant land, and pursue trail development. And again, the transportation utility recommendations, amending the local transportation plan to reflect those connections, the CIP when it's appropriate. And again, new river crossing project along the eastern boundary. And something I didn't mention, the rail spur in there right now is technically active. If the power plant goes away, there will not be an immediate user, we are assuming. That's not 100% determined. Could they find another user for that? Possibly, unlikely, but that'll be an ongoing conversation. And especially if it becomes a point where it seems like there is no potential future user in that corridor, it may be a good time to talk with them about removing that from operation. That can be a lengthy process in itself, but certainly something to keep on the horizon. Next steps, again, this is just starting from where this most recent month, planning commission, city council, and the financial analysis, which will accompany this. For us middle. Other questions?
Thank you, Hyla. Is there questions from the council?
Your Honor, thank you.
Ms. Mees, I was wondering about the process. I know we have, the funding was a grant, and what was the total fund for the study? I can't remember where-
We received a $55,000-
How much?
$55,000 federal grant matched. Hopefully, it was a total, the total projects of 110,000, 10,000 in kind, provided by the city.
Okay. And, because I was looking at the financial analysis in relation to that, and, so we will be discussing the implications of this more in the next meeting, is that what you're saying? That's, we're looking, there'll be more discussions about the implications? Where I'm going with this is basically that I've tried to talk to some, to find out more, like what will be the use actually of the, will the plant be taken apart? How many pieces will be taken down? There's a 60 by 120-foot storage facility on the plant. Will that be taken down? You mentioned, mentioned the rail facility. And I guess where I'm going with all this is that, I think the study is great, however, I think people have, at times accused the council of being, you know, not, we have so many studies, we don't really get anything done. And the, the concern I have is that, can we get something going forward as a suggestion out of the study? Because we're losing a large amount of tax base with the closing of the plant. And that tax base won't be made up by recreational trails, we have a lot of those already, or by parkland, we have 600 acres of that already. And therefore, and even putting infrastructure there, to me, is problematic because the payback on that is long, long term. And so sinking money into something where we're already losing a huge, you know, part of our tax base is, is a big problem. So my concern that I want to raise, and I think the council has to be more aware of it, find, you know, getting on point on this going forward, is that how are we going to make up for a, basically, a 5% loss of our tax base? So that our tax levy is going to have to have this increase going forward to make up for that. It's not like it's just going away, we have to make up for this tax-based loss. And I think one of the options that's been talked about but not discussed among us is that there's a seven-county region that has the need of a recycling area here. The MPCA has recommended that we have a major recycling facility in this area. And this is the only really good place for a rail pickup spur that would be, serve a recycling center. And if, in fact, the plant proper is about 75 acres, which I think is probably closer to what it is, the proper part, that those storage buildings and things, if we had a discussion now before they're torn down, the potential exists for us to, to have the grants from the Minnesota MPC and others to, to recycle, clean recycling for seven-county area, and to be able to ship that out on rail, which is way more efficient than trying to truck it out. So, but there's, there have been no discussions on that yet. And the concern I have is that we, if the plant starts being torn down, or even that 60 by 120-foot storage facility, if it's just taken down, when in fact, if the city and county might collaborate, we could potentially turn this into a tax generating situation for us, and an income-producing and job-producing situation. As you know, the county has applied for a MRF machine, et cetera. We were turned down because it didn't, the six-county, seven-county thing didn't quite go through. So, all this to say, I think, I'm looking forward to that, and I would really like, Your Honor, for us to have a, some point, a work session around this financial analysis to talk about how we might make up for that loss and what these options could mean for us if we collaborated with the county. So that, that would be my, my suggestion going forward.
I think, I believe that that's what the next, the financial analysis is, is intended to do, is to take a look at the different options and what are the financial impacts, costs. But AB, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Sure. Mayor, now I'll let Ryan talk about the financial analysis part, but just to keep in mind, as was presented from Bolton and Mayk, the majority of this land is privately owned, and that would be decisions that private landowners would need to be worked, you know, worked with. So that's, you know, not the city to say what can happen and what can't happen on private property, to some of the comments that were made. So just a reminder, this is private property.
No, I'm not speaking to, Your Honor, you're speaking to private property. I'm speaking to the 375 acres that is owned by Otter Tail Power in this area. That's what I'm speaking to, not the private property at all.
Private, Otter Tail Power is a private entity.
But I mean in terms of-
They, they own, it's not public land.
Right, right. Okay, so it's a public utility that has private ownership, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's a combo, combo facility, yeah. And I'm, when I think private, I'm thinking of what was listed here as a private owners, you know-
Sure.
-landowners, et cetera.
Ryan, did you have a comment on the next step, the financial analysis that will be presented in September, October?
Sure. So for the financial fiscal feasibility study, kind of last piece for the grant, overall grant project, the city did receive two estimates from municipal advisors to go forward with the fiscal analysis of the land use study. And that will explore more of the costs for infrastructure improvements, for the development concepts that were identified in the land use plan. And they'll also go into studying the, the tax loss and possible tax gains from the development concepts proposed in the land use plan, but just looking at the final draft of the land use plan and doing those fiscal studies around that. It wouldn't include any of the other options that were mentioned there.
Sure. Of course, we can always discuss those and have those conversations. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Rod.
Just one other, one other different, this is on the multi-use area, multifamily use area, the residential, which is up above the turban on the map. I'm referring to magenta color, is that correct? Magenta?
Yes.
Yes. And that's a multifamily dwelling there, dwellings?
That's the concept for the area.
I would like to know the location of the buried storage aquifers under that area. I don't see them identified here, but that is part of that area, and I'm wondering, putting a multifamily over those, what the implications are. So if we could know the exact location of those, it would be helpful.
I'd say if you look on the map, Rod, it would be the, the more purple color, or, yeah, it's more purple between, lavender, between them would-
I'm, I'm getting mixed up in some of the colors, but show me where it is.
That's true.
Right in the middle is where the aquifers-
Reservoirs.
The reservoir, right.
On the public, Your Honor, on the public utilities page, if you look at it, it shows a two-aquifer reservoirs.
Thanks, Scott. Which is that, what page is that?
Last one, second to last one.
Oh, I don't have that in color, but-
And we certainly took that into account in the development, that, that there would need to be an adequate buffer for that, for as long as that remained in that-
That was my concern. I didn't know, I couldn't tell by the map, the size and where they were exactly underneath, how far away.
We can make that clearer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you very much.
Sure.
We will then need a resolution to approve the final draft of the Northeast River Reach Small Area Plan.
I'll-
Scott, thank you.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? It's roll call, please.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Speedo.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,191,386.3. And if there's any questions, I will direct them to our city administrator.
Okay, then, Your Honor. I've got a question for us.
All right.
I just want to, I noticed that obviously H2M are paying $1,831.69. Just how long, could somebody remind us, how long have we got to be paying these guys?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, the council agreed to have a retainer agreement with H2M through the remainder of the year. And so it's $1,500 a month, and the other portion of that would be related to an ad that they drew up, I believe.
Thank you. Then I would make a motion to pay the bills.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports, there are no reports from staff and administrator officers, and there is no old or unfinished business that I'm aware of, and there's no new business. We do have a few miscellaneous announcements. Next city council meeting, we'll, I'm sorry, there'll be a joint school board city council meeting next Monday, August 27th, at 4:00 PM here at the city council chambers. There is, tomorrow, August 21st, 4:30 PM, there's a port authority meeting here at city council chambers. Thursday, this Thursday, August 23rd, there's the Art on Lincoln Festival, which begins midday, 11 o'clock in the morning, and runs through concert featuring Darryl Webb and his bluegrass band in the evening. And the committee, the whole meeting will be August 29th and September 3rd. All city offices will be closed in recognition of Labor Day. Tom?
One miscellaneous comment, I just wanted to say thank you. Lake Region Healthcare had our employee appreciation picnic at the community arena last week, it went, went very, very well. It was always a pleasure to deal with Steve Plaza and Pam Muxfeld and their staff. So thank you to the city staff for their help, we had a really good event.
Your Honor?
Thank you. Tom?
Yes. Just another announcement, there's a very, very important challenge going on, and most of you don't know it, because you may not be directly involved, but some of your molecules may be involved. At the Minnesota State Fair, there is a water bar challenge, where the water of Fergus Falls is going up against the water of Duluth and St. Paul, Minnesota. And last time we did this water bar, when we had the Aqua Chautauqua out here, the Fergus Falls water scored very well. I think, Your Honor, you were there part, in the stand part of the time. And, and so we are holding our own against Duluth and St. Paul, and I hope you all plan to go down to Minnesota State Fair, cheer on this challenge in our water, which is being represented there. All right? 28th of August, okay? 20th of August, and it's a water bar challenge. It'll be at the environmental center on the north side of the fairgrounds. So, kind of, same day the bands are going down, I think, from Fergus Falls.
Fergus Falls marching bands.
Yeah, they'll be down. So it's kind of fun, and hope to see you down there.
Thanks, Rod. If there's nothing else to come before the council, we are adjourned.